I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll call this school board in each independent school district 544 in order. The first item of business is to establish our forum.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matt Lenkey here. Natalie Knutson absent. Blaine Darnielsen here. Steven Vigasov here. Melissa Herdies.
Present.
We have a forum.
All right, thank you. The next item of business is to entertain a motion to approve the agenda. It's got one addition, which is slightly different than the email version that we had. It's a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
I move we approve the agenda.
All right, is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, that's approved. And we'd like to, under acknowledgements, thank Dean and Julianne Gutsmur for their donation of clothing valued at $63, which was given to Mrs. Ringquist's classroom at Cleveland School. So thanks for that donation. We will continue with reports, starting with Mary Madison on the Adopt a Class program. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. Good evening Superintendent Mas, Chair Melanie Cole, and all the board members. We've had a bit, very busy August and September, and right now I thought I'd better bring you up to date on some things that are happening even as we speak this week. Adopt a Class, we launched the Adopt a Class program last week. Businesses in the community adopt a classroom, preschool to sixth grade for $100 contribution. The classroom teacher and students form partnership with their assigned business, and together they learn about each other. I so appreciate the 65 businesses that said yes when I contacted them. The more children are a part of their community, the stronger their educational experience will be, and that's vice versa in everything. And in your packet you can see a list of the businesses that have contributed, the 65 businesses that have contributed. Also, we have a senior mentorship program. Last spring juniors at KSS applied for the senior mentorship program and were pre-approved by the counseling office, and then I paired them with an elementary classroom teacher for one semester. They meet daily, Monday through Friday. The program started in September, and on the first Wednesday of the month they meet as a group at 7:45 a.m. A guest speaker presents on a specific topic, and this is something new this year. We're bringing the community into the students to give it a little bit more rigor. Students are responsible for their weekly journal entries, a research paper, near-perfect attendance at their work site, and attendance, and an early morning monthly meeting. This program is planned by Nate Bailey, high school counselor, Kerry Thompson, curriculum director, and myself. And you can see the list of presenters. I've got them all scheduled for the entire year. At the same time, we've got a career expo this Thursday, and I wanted you to know about that. It's our 12th annual career expo for 2017. The theme is Connection to Your Future, and it'll be held here at Kennedy Secondary School. Over 700 local and area high school students will be able to meet with professionals in a diverse range of career fields to learn about future work opportunities, as well as educational and training requirement for each field. For the second-year juniors and seniors from Fergus Falls High School, they'll have the opportunity to visit local employers to learn about exciting careers right here in Fergus Falls. They will also have an opportunity to chart a career path and plan for their future. The day will allow students to visit post-secondary colleges, technical colleges, and military representatives. Also, students will have the opportunity to visit businesses that are in high demand in west central Minnesota. In addition, the students, the freshmen and sophomores, will hear keynote speaker Nathan Johnson, CEO and administrator of Pioneer Care Center, and Katie Johnson, Vice President of Marketing and Communications at Lake Region Healthcare Corporation. They will address the field of healthcare and the many career opportunities within the organization, as well as how to obtain careers both educationally and financially. They will also hear a speaker panel composed of individuals in the workforce and the different career paths they took to get to where they are today. The Fergus Falls Kennedy Secondary School ninth and 10th grade students will stay on campus. Students in grades 11th and 12th will leave campus and tour area businesses. At 11:15 Thursday, seven area schools will arrive at Kennedy Secondary School, and we have them till 1:30. We hope that everyone goes away, the students go away with the idea that they know they can achieve their aspirations and their dreams. And this event is sponsored not by one person. We couldn't do this without the hands of many. Fergus Falls Community Education, Kennedy Secondary School, Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, the Fergus Falls Economic Improvement Commission, Minnesota State Community and Technical College, Fergus Falls, West Central Initiative, Minnesota Workforce Center, Rural Minnesota SEP, Lake Country Service Co-op, and Lake Region Healthcare. Also, we reimburse the area schools coming in their transportation for that day. In your packet you'll see three flyers. One is for the ninth graders for that day, one is ninth and 10th graders, the next one is for the 11th and 12th graders, and the third one is for the area schools that are coming in. And we really hope that you can come and be a part of the day and everything. Also included in your handout is the Fall 2017 Community Education brochure. It's been busy, doing lots of scheduling, and that is what I have to share with you tonight. Are there any questions?
Mary, with the Adopt a Class, is there still opportunity for more businesses to -- is there still need for more businesses to participate in that, or is it kind of closed?
If we had some extras, we could put more at early childhood, you know, and they can surely get in touch with me.
Okay.
Everyone, everyone's matched.
Okay.
Mary, did you say how many students are involved in the senior mentorship program?
Eleven. It was a larger program in the past, but we all looked at things and decided we needed to pare it down and to give it more depth and breadth, you know.
And they're at which schools again?
They're at Adams, McKinley, Cleveland, they're here, all the schools and everything. Anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you, Mary.
I want to thank you. I've got to go and start another community event class.
Bye, Mary.
All right, and then moving on to reports, I'll start with myself. Ah, yeah, all right. Today we had a special education cooperative meeting, and it was the meeting with all the member districts in attendance. The business end of the meeting was slim, but we did have a presenter on the Level Four program that's sponsored by Lake's Country Service Co-op. It's going to be called the Lake's Country Academy, and it's one program in three locations, Morehead, here, Alexandria. The Fergus Falls component of this program, they just found a spot. They had a real difficult time, and so they're going to go into the old Twin Oaks building. And the program's going to be, and this is probably review information from what we've had before, but the programs in Alexandria is going to serve children with autistic spectrum disorder, and then Ferguson, Morehead will serve children that have EBT, emotional behavioral programs. So anyway, they, it's still a work in progress, even though the school year's begun. They're still kind of refinancing and putting the pieces together. So we got, we had that update today, and that was the highlight from that meeting. Region One, we reviewed the audit with detail, and I have to acknowledge that the accounting and standards practices clearly don't make a lot of sense to me. It used to be, you'd read an audit and you'd see that was our balance this year and last year, and the different funds, and now they have so many invisible retirement accounts where money that you don't pay, actually aren't obligated to pay out, has to be allocated and added and deducted, that it's just like, it's just like a fluffy cloud in the room. So eventually compare down that, where the financial status is. But a lot of government standards required, and it gets more and more confusing. We'll see it when our audit comes out soon.
Is that a part of GAS before you, I don't remember which number to put there, 45 or 68?
It was 68.
68, okay.
So, but, and then talked about restructuring up at Region One due to an aging staff. The rumors are going out. Okay, so then, yeah. And so then negotiations. I would note that we've had two meetings where we in earnest negotiated. We had a meeting back in the spring where we kind of set parameters of when we'd meet and how we'd really get things going, but we've had two meetings this fall, and I'm happy to note that we've adopted a more collaborative process, and it seems to be going very well. It seems progressive from my point of view. The first night that we sat down, the board made an offer of 5.03% to the teaching staff, and they countered with 8.99% salary counter proposal. And we have met since then and mostly worked on the contract language that may need revision. And so when we met last Wednesday, we didn't make an additional financial offer, we just were working on the language. So I would note that that's, like I said, going pretty well.
Could I add that those percentages are over two years?
Over two years and comprehensive packages, not just on, not just a 8.99 over two years, all on salaries, the whole package, so. Great, thank you. Any other questions for me, comments? All right, and then we'll just keep going down the line and get a board report from Melissa Herdies.
The Curriculum Review Committee will meet next Monday, so I should have a report after that. And then with legislative report, I have a couple of things. First of all, the legislature won't meet again until February 20th of next year, 2018. But in the last month, the Minnesota Department of Education did submit the new ESAA, Every Student Succeeds Act, plan for Minnesota. And then the United States Department of Education has 120 days to approve that. I do have, this is what, this is Minnesota's plan, so if you want to take it and also pass it, you can. If you want to know more, a little bit more about that. And then the other thing, let's see. Also, one of the big things that came out of the last legislative session is that the legislature passed a big teacher licensure report. And so this is part of the negotiations too, but, so they have a new governance model and also a board-tiered licensure system.
Okay, and that's it?
I think so.
Yeah, thank you for this. It's nice to have a little bit more of a validity definition of the Every Student Succeeds Act. Superintendent Mas provided us the copy from the state last time, and it was a little hard to get to the meetings. Okay.
Forward.
So, continuing with board reports, anyone have any other questions or comments for Melissa? All right, Blaine?
Meeting confer, we have not met regarding buildings and grounds. I have not met there. A couple of things with the buildings and ground, I believe, just spoke with Mark before the meeting, I think our world-known playground out here, so everything's been taken care of out there. And then sheds going up, the maintenance shed, so people driving by with her, they can see that coming along. Had a little issue with some sewer lines in the grade, so we're in the process of getting that taken care of. Added a little extra to our bottom line, but it was needed, so. And then 544 Foundation, last met on September 14th, and will be meeting again this coming Thursday. And just a couple of things from the last meeting. Reported back on September 8th was the Otter Pride Night at the first home football game of the year, and they served over 500 people that night for Taekwondo egg, so it was for two hours. That was moving out some Taekwondo eggs. And new member report, up to 460 new members since September 1st, 2013, so they're getting close to their goal of 500. And then the other thing, report this past weekend, homecoming. They worked with Mindy, and they're kind of tied in the Hall of Fame inductees instead of the springtime, worked into the homecoming activities. And so they were part of the parade and introduced during the game that night. And then also Saturday night was a really nice banquet. They had a meal at 6 o'clock, at 7 o'clock, there was, in the auditorium, there was a get-together, and I was glad I went to that. And the six inductees spoke, and it was a nice evening, so it was a really, really good job. The two inductees from the 544 Fund Foundation for Distinguished Alumni were John Erickson from the class of 1964 and Dan Fishman from the class of 1961. So, good night.
All right, any questions to Blaine?
The playground, Blaine, does that mean, you said it's being cared of, it means it's been raised up?
Yes, it's just happened today.
Awesome, that's great.
All right, Steven Vigasov?
Staff development committee met, and really it's all about, you know, how much budget is left with the staff development committee. I think it's start $25,000 at the beginning of the year, and staff's able to request different things for different types of training that they want to go to, you know, meals and lodging is sometimes included, depending on how pricey it is. They're actually down, they've actually used up most of their budget. They're down to about $4,900 left in their budget, partly because they got to about half. And then Craig Peterson, the chair, the committee, sent out just a mass email saying, hey, if you have anything that you want to get done this year, get your request in, and then you just got flooded with requests, which is great. It's great to see that our staff cares about their own development and that kind of thing. And, you know, I guess it's, that's pretty much all that, all that kind of went on in the meeting. We just approved a ton of different staff development requests, and, well, this time last year they didn't have, they had, they had more budget left compared to last year. But again, it's, people are being proactive with that, they want to get their training in. Some of the requests aren't until towards the end of the school year, but, so, that's about all I got.
All right. Any questions for Steven? Matt Lenkey?
Minnesota High School League met on Thursday, October 5th. During that meeting, the executive director's report, the executive director, David, I think it's Stade? Is that right? Stade, thank you. He attended the Section 5 meeting up in Fargo, and just one of the things that has been talked a lot about is concussions, and Minnesota is one of eight states that provide concussion insurance to high school participants. So that's something that just started this year for Minnesota, and I think that number is going to continue to go up, but at this point in time, we are one of eight that does provide it. The other thing that I think is kind of interesting is what the Minnesota High School League Executive Committee has asked to do, and one that I found kind of interesting just because of the location is, and I just thought I'd just bring it up because it's kind of interesting, is Royal Road High School is asking, is requesting the Minnesota High School League to allow some children from Canada to attend school there and to participate in their activities, because they have some employees that work there. And I can bet you they can all skate. So, I just thought that was kind of a.
And from my vantage point, they're only asking for permission because they've been doing it for years, so.
Yeah, so maybe Roseau maybe.
Max and I.
We can get, Minnesota High School League. So anyway, it was just kind of funny, so, and that was interesting. The other one that was, that was a discussion item that was brought up was that Jim Bell is a student angler organization, and they are asking the Minnesota High School League to consider making bass fishing an activity with the league, and so they're going to be looking at that. Some colleges have that, and.
Really big down in the cities already.
So they're looking at maybe doing bass fishing as a.
Is that discriminatory against the sunfish?
Yeah. I don't know. I just know bass fishing is pretty popular. I think some colleges do it too and stuff like that, so. So they're looking at doing that. So that's with the Minnesota High School League. Lake's Country Service Co-op, we met September 21st, on Thursday also, and I just wanted to give an update on the online 18. That's for teachers that have to, from high school, that have to get graduate credits. And at this point in time, Lake's Country Service Co-op, working with the Morehead, I want to make sure I say, Morehead State, basically they have 163 participants right now, so, and they continue to believe that it's going to probably go up, but at this point in time, they have 163 participants. The other thing that Lake's Country Service Co-op is really working with right now is providing a new statewide pool. They are combining all the co-ops are coming together as for a statewide for insurance. They want to be competitive, and so this is the one way they believe they can become competitive, because basically they needed to relook at what they were doing, and they feel that this is an avenue that could possibly end up being good for its members, and also make it so sustainable. And so they are working on that, and that's part of their idea, and it's going to hopefully help stabilize their rate increases and not have such big huge rate increases for different ones, and try to, again, become more competitive within the state and within the co-op, so.
Do they have a timeframe for that, Matt, when they're hoping to have that onboard?
Well, they've already started, so they're doing that, so it's initially, they're just rolling it out slowly. I think it's like anything else, they got to work through some of the things, but they've already started to pool their money, the resources together. They have already increased their stop loss of half a million dollars, because they feel that that can be handled through the state, statewide pooling and stuff like that, so for claims wise, and so, and that again will reduce the year premiums and stuff like that, so.
I think they're planning on July 1st, right?
Yeah, I think they are.
Next July 1st, because they, they go July 1st to June 30th, so I think they're doing it for next year.
So, but it sounds promising, and it seems like it's working relatively well, so, so far, so.
Okay.
And that's all I have to report.
Any other questions from that?
That concussion insurance, is that, is that something that kids are automatically enrolled in if they have, if they're an inactive?
Yes, if you are a participant and under the Minnesota High School League, then you are covered under that insurance.
Any sport?
Any sport.
So who pays for the, who pays the premium for the insurance?
We do indirectly, I think. It's basically, Minnesota High School League's paying for it, but we indirectly are paying for it, so, because we pay dues to the Minnesota High School League and.
So if my son gets a concussion in soccer or something like that, when, the insurance will kick in after my insurance pays, like it'll cover, like, do you know the coverages? Do they tuck over?
I don't particularly know the coverages and stuff. I know that, I think that'd be more of an activities director question, like part of it, because you got, and you got to remember Minnesota High School League is for 9th through 12th?
Varsity.
Varsity.
So if he's an eighth grader playing on varsity, I believe that would be covered then.
Yes.
So it'd be a part of a varsity program, too.
Superintendent Mas?
Yes, a couple of things here. Long-term facility committee, we had our first meeting at our last board meeting, after our last board meeting, and we toured Cleveland, and we toured McKinley and Adams, and had a nice group of people that are interested in our facilities and giving input. On October 23rd, we will be touring this building, the Kennedy Building, and Roosevelt. And then on November 20th, we'll be sitting down in the cafeteria and then looking, reviewing notes from our two tours, and then also looking at enrollment data and start developing questions and thoughts and getting input from the people that are on the tours. Homecoming, I think it was one of the finest homecoming weeks we've had. We had a great coronation, activities all week. Friday, there was powder puff football and Ironman volleyball, and there was, the parade was outstanding with, it really was adding that we had all of our distinguished alumni and our Hall of Fame people were able to be here and be part of that parade, and it was very nicely done, and like Blaine had said, it was just a good program overall, having the banquet on the Saturday night of our homecomings, and then when you win the football game too, that's good, and the dance is good. Yeah, there wasn't even.
Free popcorn that night, too.
Free popcorn by Gacy City, yeah, so it's kind of fun, our businesses are jumping on that. And this week, I want to remind people that it's parent-teacher conferences, K through eight. If you are a parent of a K through eight student, your conference will be scheduled, so if you don't have that yet, please contact the school, because you should be scheduled. And 9th through 12th, we have Thursday evening from 4:00 to 7:45, all day Friday, and then Monday, next Monday evening from 4:00 to 7:45 again. And it just can't stress enough, yes, you could look at synergy, it used to be Power School, you could look at synergy and you could see grades, but all you see there is a letter grade. You don't see the interactions, or you don't get to hear from a teacher the interactions of your child in day-to-day, you know, there's more than just the grade, I'm saying, so please come in, and especially at the high school level, right when your child needs the most guidance as they're leading off into their life, we have a tremendous drop in parent-teacher conference attendance, and we'd like to boost that back up, so hopefully people will come. Mary Madison talked about Career Day, that's a great day for our area, so, and we have a, so it's in the morning, in the afternoon, we have an early out to prepare for that parent-teacher conferences. And then next week, MEA is on October 19th and 20th, so that's what I have.
All right. Any questions from Superintendent? I would just note that my nieces went and got popcorn, and I thought the people in the concession stand just made a mistake on one. I couldn't hear what was going on because I was at the playground the whole time.
No, it was 840 some bags of popcorn we gave.
Wow, nice.
I think I did 400 of them.
All right, and on to real business then. Our next items include the consideration of the general consent items, which would include approval of the minutes from our last meeting on September 25th, and then the bills and treasures report. And I'll pick up the slack on that. Natalie Knutson's our treasurer but was unable to attend tonight, so I met early and reviewed the bills with our business manager, Mark Mastin, and did not find any unusual bills other than that we had quite a few spending bills in here from, for example, the cabinets for the science classrooms, and then our payment to, for installation of synergy, so some of the things to get the school year off and running, Cooper's Office supply, for example, all that was a lot of preparatory work that we paid out. But even after paying those waiting bills, we got about $6,700,000 in our account, and so we are sitting in fine shape. Did I miss any great stuff?
I think I did it.
And so, then we'll also cover personnel items in this consent agenda, so.
At our last board meeting, we talked about some special education paraprofessionals that were needed, and we are recommending hire Samuel Newbauer, Kayla Wurzlinger, and Samantha Johnson. And then we did have one support staff resignation, Tricia. And then we did have one support staff resignation, Tricia Hartwell. And we have a retirement. Collette Cox let us know that she will be retiring December 21st, which is the last full day before our Christmas break, so, and we have a, we have a resolution on collect coming up here, but I recommend approval of those items.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
Some.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion on any of the items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. We'll move on to our next item of business, which is setting up assurance of compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination for the 2017 and 2018 year. So, is there a motion to approve this report of compliance?
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so Superintendent Ness, you want to, you know, about this?
Yes, you know, it's an annual, annual item that we have to do to make sure that we're reporting to the Commissioner of Education, that we will not in any way allow discrimination in any of our practices, so that's an, any motion by the board?
All right. We double sign it, we promise.
We promise.
All right.
We will not discriminate this year.
All right. Any, any other comments or questions about the approval of the report? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And then the next item of business is a resolution on the retirement of Collette Cox, whereas Collette Cox began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in September 1991, and whereas Collette has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 26 and a half years, and whereas Collette had done an excellent job as a parap, educator in the school district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls Public School Board to thank Collette Cox for her 26 and a half years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution and move for adoption?
Call out for the resolution, move for adoption.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And will, any discussion before we do roll call? All right. Blaine?
Matt Linsky, yes. The only call?
Yes.
Paulie Daniels, yes. Stephen Vigesson?
Yes.
Wilson Hurd?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right. Great. Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. As far as our business meeting goes, we'll be sticking around for a work session and continue to talk about our Long-Term Facility Committee and an update, and go through the tiered licensure system, which Melissa referenced in her report tonight. We are going to be doing an evaluation on Superintendent, so we'll talk about how we're going to proceed with that, and then further discuss our contract negotiation. Our next regular board meeting will be Monday, October 23rd at 5:00 PM here at the Otter Community in that Kennedy Secondary School. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.